We're hopefully in Congress meeting tomorrow. Thank you all for being here this morning. First up, we have the devotion by District Three.
For the past couple of weeks, I've been concerned. The horrific stabbing, the Idaho College student, I think everyone remembers that, and the public reaction. We live in a so-called civilized world, Caesar world. Government laws, courts, taxes. The guy, the murderer, Kohlberger, he struck a deal with the state. He gets to live in jail without parole until he dies. But what about the news outlets? Everyone now is claiming that he is going to be murdered himself by other killers while in prison for that terrible, terrible crime. What about his life ever after? What about forgiveness? Only one family of the four impacted have forgiven him. Quote, "Brian, I'm here today to tell you I have forgiven you because I no longer could live with that hate in my heart. And for me to become a better person, I have forgiven you." This was said by the aunt of one of the murdered students. From the other three families, nothing but condemnation, no forgiveness. This has concerned me now for several weeks. Took it up a week or so ago at a weekly men's Bible study I attend. And of course, we had lots of talk, lots of discussion, a lot of opinion. I'm not sure where we ended up, but it may have been with something like Romans 12:19. Never avenge yourselves, but leave it to the wrath of God. For it is written, vengeance is mine; I will repay, says the Lord. And yes, I think we concluded that Kohlberger should be forgiven. But what about forgiveness in today's world? I felt I just wanted to ask us all, myself included, do we need a forgiveness checkup? Do our actions require forgiveness? Do we hold grudges, or do we forgive? That's perfect. Lord God, here we are this damp morning in Askagoula, Mississippi, preparing to address, discuss, and make governance decisions for our county. Not so significant in your overall world, but day-to-day is important here with us. Therefore, we ask you to please be with us, guide and direct us in the direction that is pleasing to you, and help us reach out and make disciples of all nations. We pray this in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Thank you. Stanford, where is it?
Praise the nations to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. That brings us into a presentation this morning by South Mississippi Mayor Andrew Hattler, District Three. Mr. Hattler, come on up.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President, and Mr. Moore. As you know, we come before y'all every year and give you the snapshot of the funds provided by Jackson County, of what they look for, the goods and services provided to the citizens of Jackson County. Each one of you should have received this handout. These are FY24 numbers. You will get FY25 numbers next year when we come to the presentation. But in fiscal year '24, the county provided $113,000, $113,000. And the county's citizens received about $3.7 million in goods and services returned back to them. I'd say that's a pretty good return on the investment. But over 49,000 home delivery bills, 512 workforce program participants, 565 first-time callers to Mac Center, 188 jobs created to repay about 21 active loans here in Jackson County, $4,500 in scholarships provided to deserving students in Jackson County. I do like to make note that none of those funds that were provided by Jackson County are used for those scholarship purposes. Those are funds through SMPDD. So, you know, every year when I come before you, I tell you that we wouldn't be able to provide these services if we didn't have the partnership that we have with our member counties. Y'all are one of 15 counties that we represent. I want to thank Mr. Troy Lawson, Mr. Dennis Morris for serving on our Board of Directors. They paid a whole lot of money to do that. I'm just kidding, they paid out there. But anyway, we wouldn't be able to provide those services if y'all weren't too partnered with ours. I personally want to say thank you. Today, we have our team with us that kind of scattered out, I probably didn't miss anybody. Mr. Madeline Walker, Division Director, Senior Services, Captain Tim, Assistant Division Director, Medicaid waiver, Ashley Briscoe Marketing, Kristen Gunner, Special Products Division Director, Tanya Coyne, Assistant Division Director, A.G., Jennifer Bell, our CFO, Mr. Patricia Morrison, our Assistant Division Director of Workforce, and Stephen O'Meara, who is our Division Director of Business and Government Finance. Did I miss anybody? I ain't up for good. Well, I like to introduce now, because I ain't the one up here giving the report, but truly, they are the ones that make this organization what it is today. I just happen to be giving the report. There's the brains behind the operation. They're the ones that really make this organization go around, so I want to personally thank them. Do any of y'all have anything? Madeline?
Yes, sir.
Kristen? Tanya? Tricia? Stephen?
Yes. I'd like to, we've spoken to several of you individually and as a board. I'll just remind you, SMPDD owns Municipal Advisors of Mississippi, which is a financial advisory service company that provides municipal advisory services to issuers of bonds. And we would certainly welcome the opportunity to help serve y'all in that capacity on your next bond issue. We're saving clients money, real money, not just $1,000, but, you know, five and six figures. And we would, again, just like the opportunity to represent you in your next financing bid.
All right, anybody else didn't say anything? All right. A lot of you, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
I just want to thank you for the support of Jackson County, senior citizens, community action.
Yes, sir.
I go out there to see the seniors on Tuesdays, and I'd just like to thank you for SMPDD for y'all's support.
Well, it's our pleasure. That's part of a lot of what we do here, and it's our pleasure to be involved in that team with the county and media action and everybody else involved. We had some meetings with Brian, you know, not too long ago. We're going to try and see if we can get some transportation numbers up. Tommy just informed me they're working on that right now. So, there's a lot of good things that we're doing. We started a veteran-directed care program. We're the largest in the nation. We cover Florida, Georgia, Alabama, Mississippi, Tennessee, Arkansas, Louisiana, and Texas. So, little South Mississippi is the largest veteran-directed care program in the United States. We're doing a lot of good things because of the team that we have behind us. Anything else?
These numbers are impressive, and they really are. Y'all did a good job.
Mr. Barry, those numbers aren't cooked. They're backed up by everything. You put lots of blood and stuff in, you have to make it sound really good. These numbers are to attention. And we've got the backup to show you everything that you need. Because those are the true numbers. So, we do, we appreciate working with our counties, and anything we can do to provide services, please pick your phone up and give us a call. That's our job.
I want to add one thing, too, just to point out, like, you know, looking at the numbers and seeing 565 calls from the Maxer might not mean a whole lot to an individual, but here's it. But the story I was told about a specific individual who was sleeping in their car, was a young mother, sleeping in her car, trying to go through nursing school. She called the Maxer, she didn't know where to go. They took her by the hand, walked her through a process. Now she's employed, she's graduated from school, she's a nurse, and she has someone that lives. Her child is now in school and is working for her. And if she had not had that Maxer call, she may have not graduated, the child might still be homeless. I mean, there's no telling what would happen. So, that's the kind of care and the kind of things that that 565 represents.
Put that number in your phone. You got a problem, constituent that has a problem, give them that number. We're going to try and help them any way we can. It's not they pick up, say, okay, we're going to get back. We follow them through the process, and we try and help them through that. We appreciate those, and that is a lot of contact. So, I think we handle more calls in the state of Mississippi than any of our other career force from Maxer throughout the state. But it's all because of the team. I see these baseball players back here, and, you know, these coaches are the coaches and the drivers, but those kids wouldn't be able to do what they did if it wasn't the teamwork that they provided with these guys. Congratulations to y'all. I'm with you, Tom. We got to go see y'all's counterparts in George County now. You got any messages you need to send out there? Also, at this time, Troy, is this appropriate time to do our scholarship presentation? I'm going to turn it over to Troy, and Ash is going to come take some pictures. Y'all all have my phone number, if you need anything from that week, pick the phone up and give me a call. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And this is one of the other things that makes SMPDD a fun and fruitful organization, actually be a part of it. We're allowed to give scholarships out summer to bright, new, rising stars that are going to go to our community college. So, Jonathan Boyles. Benjamin Hudson.
Troy, I'd like to, I forgot one thing. The scholarships that we've been able to provide through our Board of Directors, to date, we've given right about $400,000 in scholarships to deserving students throughout our 15-county area. So, it's a great program, and we wouldn't be able to do it if it weren't for our Board of Directors.
I have one speaker here. I have just a complaint from her background. Her name is Lisa Lawson. She's from Cassaculla, Mississippi. She's a proud graduate of Cassaculla High School. She officially completed her graduation requirement in December, but she walked with her class in 2025 as badge maker. Although the school, Elisa, is consistent that she demonstrated a commitment to academic success, she's a member of the Beta Club and the National Technical Survey Board. Ms. Elisa is a hard-working dedicated. She's earned her place in the AP Honor Roll, and she's a recognized Students of Month of CCTI and the Rotary Club Senior Citizen of Month, Senior Student of Month. This month, she began her step in the active journey to Gulf Coast Community College, Jackson County Campus, as Associate Degree in Business Administration. While initially, she would attend her education at the University of South Alabama, where she pursued a bachelor's degree in business administration and focused on real estate. We are proud to possess the driven and accomplished of this student. This scholarship reflects her hard work and ambition for her bright future. This is Elisa Lawson.
Y'all read Randy up there in front of the center.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Appreciate y'all. Next up, we have a special group being on the air with us this morning, and we have a group of 90-year-olds, a group of young, young Arkansasers, with the gym. And the World Series 90-year-old champion for 2025, and 90-year-old. Y'all, come on up here. We got some problems. Come on. Y'all, this is a brief, these numbers here are very impressive, y'all. These young men have done a great job. It says, "Jackson County Board of Supervisors, certificate of revenue red condition, presented to Van Cleve 9 New All-Star Team as the 2025 Dixie Youth Baseball 9 New World Series Champions. On July 20th, 2025, the Van Cleve 9 New All-Star Team finished an undefeated season, which was 21-0, as the 2025 Dixie Youth 9 New World Series Champions. Their success is attributed to many hours of both physical and mental training the team endured throughout their season, in which they scored, and listed these numbers, 243 runs, while only allowing 18 from their opponents."
All right.
The team earned, earned the sub-district, district, and state championship before trap lead to Arkansas to earn the World Series title. This dedicated group of living, learning, and their coaches and parents is a testament to hard work and dedication. The board congratulates the Van Cleve 9 New All-Star Team on their achievement and is proud to have them as ambassadors of Jackson County, and we look forward to what your future holds here in Jackson County. Thank you, y'all. Y'all, if I don't tell you names, I, when I do, y'all would just raise your hands, okay? The first is Casey Jones. Where's he at? There you go. Lucas Gentry. Ellen Ball. There he is. Flora Frevo. Dalton Jones. River Rogers. Rook Rucker. Lou Gray. Mo Williams. There you go. Ricky Ely. Willie Ely. And Clayton Taft. There you go. Over here are Jared Ely, who is a head coach.
Yeah, Jared, if I, that he's.
And Stuart Jones. Back there, Stuart, and Jimmy Taft. And Mr. Taft, he also works for the county. He worked for the Redwood. And Mr. Taylor, as I'm going to say.
I want to address manager coaches. It's unbelievable what you guys are doing, and I know it's not just something you go out and do every year or so. You're dedicated to children, and you spend hours and hours every day during the season, and what you do is so recognized by them. 20 years from now, these guys are going to remember you and talk about you and talk at you also. Especially, I want to thank what you guys have just done.
Shout out to our Recreation Department, who does a fantastic job on those Van Cleve fields. I got two of those guys, the field shape probably helped with the championship. I would say that, and I would play on a good field. Good, good, congratulations.
And a gift from these guys to y'all, we got all signed in baseball. We'd like to acknowledge one of y'all, one of those to put up there. There's a little something for our appreciation from our guys, y'all, for the recognition. Also, too, I'd like to add for these guys, I think it was at the state championship, they were awarded the, the sport, I think, the championship award for their character and their well-being. They're good, good.
Give me, y'all, any, any others right there? Any of y'all want to say anything? Sure?
I would like to tell a joke. This is from my days of coaching Waver. I heard that over in Arkansas, just before y'all started playing, a coach got you open in a group. Guys, I want you to understand, the umpires, they can see very well. If they have glasses on, that's okay. They have glasses, so they can see. The umpires know all of the rules, and they're not going to make any mistakes. Every call that they make, we've got to assure ourselves that it's fair and recognize it. Are there any questions? Okay, okay, go to the stands and fill your mothers' hand.
If anyone's coming to meet and get signed, baseball.
I want you. We'll give them just a minute.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on now. That brings us down to amendments to the agenda. I don't have any. Mr. Moore?
I have one.
Mr. Taylor?
I have none.
Mr. Moore?
Mr. Wilson?
Done.
Mr. Bulbous?
After we get out of executive session, I'd like to order recess to a brief lunch hour session sometime.
All right, ready? Bernie?
Yes, sir.
Mr. O'Neal?
None.
Mr. Collins?
None.
Are there any others? Any?
I have an addition to the document.
All right, they're here, an order approving amendments to the agenda. Come on.
I got one. Item under item 10, from a, I'd like to add, given resources of discussion regarding a can pass program.
All right, are there any others? All right. If not, I did an order to approve the amendment to the agenda. There's that motion by Mr. Ross, second, by Mr. Moore, all over the table, say aye. And others, no. That brings us down to general public comments. Is there anyone here for general public comments? Just give us your name, name, please.
I'm Zenix, 7500 Recreation Drive, Coaching Springs. I am concerned that I heard last month that there was a consideration to change the county code regulation as far as what animals are allowed on individual property. One of the, what I understood is say that any platid subdivision would not be allowed to have armed animals, uncoated. I think this is a definite infringement of property rights of individuals. Before, like, in my subdivision, it's three acres. You know, I have additional lot, six acres. Then out there, for a long time, as a platid subdivision, when you start saying, we're going to infringe, which means, in my opinion, taking property rights away from individual sets, that's all I think.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else for general public comment?
Mr. Keith Broadway, Anthony W. Beach Drive. This is regarding the Widen Beach Field. I was supposed to talk to the Joe, so he's on top side. Ranely, you're not. I want to go, background, I'm retired Army Logistics, Car Care Officer, so I understand logistics. I want to know who the genius was that stopped an issue, get up one morning, and now down to the next block is closed, no warning, none whatsoever. I also want to know who the genius was that did not coordinate with the local homeowners that are parking on the south streets from Blueberry on down on both Sixth Street and Eighth Street. That's a nightmare. And that's just before school back in session. Now, if school's back in session, I haven't been out there in the morning, but I can only imagine what school was, if people were still parking on the side road. I mean, did no one that dresses, did no one that think it was necessary to communicate with the 2,000-plus people that live in the area? Hey, this is fixing to happen, and just get up Monday morning and, huh? It's like, what? Why? What's going on? Can we have some little coordination here? I mean, personally, I expect better. I expect better in the future. I'm disappointed, you know, is an understatement. Can we please do better?
So, first of all, they're tying in the intersection between humans.
I know what they're doing, and I understand that.
So, I didn't.
It is unacceptable, it is unacceptable that y'all do all this and no notification.
I'm not raising my voice to you, so you don't need to be raising your voice.
I apologize, I'm sorry.
Now, you live south of Bridge, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so why don't you come in from Pointe Champs to go to your house? Why do you come through the construction traffic when there's free traffic coming from Pointe Champs, Fountain Blue Road, Spring Street? You've got like five other ways you can get to your house instead of coming through the construction zone. Am I not right?
If I go around nine o'clock at night instead of time, I'm not going this way, and I'm going generally.
But needless to say, I would avoid the construction traffic if I lived on the south, which I used to.
It's not just me.
I know that, but let me tell you, so I've talked to the sheriff multiple times, and he's doing a great job down there, uh, enforcing what he can with speed limits, because we don't have, we don't have...
We appreciate that very much.
Uh, in fact, he's got, most of the time, he's got two deputies down there, uh, directing traffic, watching for speeders, watching for reckless drivers, uh, people that are parking on side of the road, they've been advocating about getting them off side of the road. Now, they, they're not going, I've got them on Sixth Street, so, uh, North Fifth, Fourth, and Third, and then North Sixth, Seventh, and Eighth, and Ninth, that's the streets I've got them on, but you guys. So, he's doing all he can do, and we're doing all we can do to make this process. All I ask is that people just, construction's not easy, man, it's not.
I know that, I know that. I got dozen that does road research, but don't just get up one morning and block the road and not notify the whole freaking community.
Yeah, that happened, but, you know, we'll, we'll have some better, uh, it's only temporary. What do you think, Joe, about another week, they'll be done tying that intersection in?
It'll rain, it'll be raining. And we work hard.
Yeah, we work hard, yeah, and I didn't know about it until the sound. But, of course, I don't, I don't want the contractor to be slowed down any either, he's making great progress.
Yeah, so what do you think?
Uh, I think everybody's going to enjoy the end product on the first phase, and then they'll get to the second phase. I just ask people to bear with us, we're going to make this as painless as possible.
Just afford that with us.
We'll, we'll, we'll take that under consideration, I appreciate that.
Anyone else? Come on in.
Okay, there would be, um, I'm here today for a pair of glasses.
Give me your name and address, please.
Uh, Amy Weaver, and I live in Oak Park Estates. Um, so I am here today not only as a resident, but as a committed member of this community, someone who believes in fairness, reason, and responsibility of land ownership. While I just get the lead for these zoning guidelines, I'm asking this board to consider the broader implications and more importantly, inconsistencies that arise from how these ordinance is being enforced. So, I'd like to begin with saying, um, I'm here about the concern over the chicken issues. Um, my chickens are not a nuisance. They're clean, quiet, well-contained, um, beneficial, not just to my family, but to the soil, pest control, neighborhood food chain, and as well as neighborhood education. Um, every single child in my neighborhood comes into my yard regularly and learns something new all the time, maybe reproduction, life cycle, care, whatever it might be, um, and they love it. Um, I have a concern, uh, with this era of rising food insecurity and supply chain stability, that I think the backyard chickens are one of the most responsible and sustainable choices a resident can make. Um, yet this county ordinance says that they're not allowed in the R1 zone, so that zone, oddly enough, still allows barking dogs, bonfires, bomb parties. Hey, man. Oh, and the list can go on and on. Actually, I brought some, I printed out some information for you guys, it's kind of a fact versus myth, can I get this to you?
Sure.
Okay, um, and it's guided with sources, so it's not just a pen, it's fact. Um, and it just kind of spells out, like, what the common complaints might be for having backyard chickens versus what the benefits might be, and what's the challenge, so. Um, I heard somebody say it's ridiculous, um, you know, well, when issues affect you, that may not be ridiculous to you, and to me, this is important. So, uh, I am an administrator of a service line at City River Healthcare System. I deal with some of the most difficult, well, not difficult, people, people in the most difficult situations. So, I'm the administrator of the patient mental stabilization, which is the hospital detox, and it is incredibly hard. It is not a position, I'm trying to be emotional, it is not a position many people want to do. I've been in this position for more than five years now. My chickens don't want to be just an animal or a pet. I'm up in the morning with my chickens before I go to work, because they provide me with peace and some joy, and the first thing I do when I get home is I come to my chicken coop and spend some time, you know, to kind of decompose. If I didn't have that, I don't know, I feel like I might lose my mind. Um, and I think that you all know that the issues that we have, and not only in our county, but all over the coast, really not in state, it's a nationwide issue, but locally, dealing with people struggling with substitutes, overdoses, it's, it's hard, and it's, it's a big issue. So, I just kind of want to get that personal, you know, what it means to me, what I do in the community, what I provide to your, your family members, to your friends, and this, this is a threat to me, to potentially have my chickens removed by October is, I don't even know if I can put it into words, obviously, I'm emotional right now. I've been a resident, um, my entire life, I was born and nursing in the hospital, moved away from my education and came back, uh, bought my house in the year two thousand, so I've been a resident, paying taxes for, well, much more than that, but since I've done that house twenty-five years now. So, it's, it's affecting me, and I'm definitely taking it personally, and I would just ask you to consider the implications, um, maybe, uh, grandfather clauses, people that have had chickens, you know, I'm, I'm not at a point where I could move to find a property that's bigger than an acre that would allow me to have chickens, being a longtime resident, I'm priced out. Not many people can afford to, to make that change, so that's not an option for me. I've already considered it, I've been on the ML list for, for many months now, but I appreciate your time and thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Give us your name and address, please.
I'm running along, fifty-eight, twenty-four, thirty-one, and thirty-two. My chicken's gone on like two seconds. Um, well, it's a rare, a therapy, the pet, whatever, I'm handling, I'm born with, I was active, and of course, I'm related, so I can get it out after the place, the place of chicken. So, a couple of those, you guys, had a case, came before you, from, I think, Oak Park Estates, somewhere down my area, there's someone right there, a bunch of chickens, and we finally decided, I wasn't in the house, that lady was in the field, she had, this is a therapy, and you agree, and that's going to have a chicken up to a certain level, and the boots and the roosters, I bet she had, but she still saw the therapy needed in it. To be a chicken, or not wild animal, or farm animal, that's just, gets a long round of effort, most, you know, chicken, or you cage, containing, they're in, therefore, not come up to limit this space, they still have to wander around inside their cage, their happy, we just benefit from the egg. Um, so therefore, why not, let's have, let chickens not be considered farm animals for the purpose of being kept in our record. So, oceans, springs, and all of them, you know, this can't, or it is allowed, a person will have a chick, which always depends on, there is, there's, I have to say, it does change the public, it does apply a lot of things, so therefore, why shouldn't we not allow chickens to be kept in therapy in our record? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Name and address.
Mr. Collins. Mr. Collins. I see a lot of people talking about chickens, I think there's a post that was going around on Facebook this weekend, they said that people voted...
Come on in, Mark, I want to make sure they...
Yes, imagine that, uh, the post, I think, said that the board is voting on not allowing chickens in platid subdivisions today, and there's no vote going on on chickens today, I don't know where that came from, I heard a lady say by October, and that's what the ads say, that it's going to be voted on by October, but there's no, there's nothing to be voted on today about chickens. And I would say, at a minimum, if you've already got chickens, in my mind, that's very important, at a bare minimum.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yes.
Come on in.
That doesn't mean everybody agrees with me, but look.
Yes.
Hi, Bill, this is, I'm at six one oh five Ridge Road, and I was going to just talk about my chickens, I've got five girls, they, they haven't laid an egg yet. I spent so much money, and when I get my egg, it's going to be paid in gold. My, my girls are right by my house, I have no neighbors on one side, the golf course is about, they cause a lot of grief to me because they're, they're chickens, but I do enjoy them and I take good care of them, they're not running wild on the golf course, they're right by the house, and I, I just enjoy them, and that's just what I'd like to say, just give that consideration when you are to vote on the issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on in.
Good morning, my name is Helen, this is you, my address is twenty-eight hundred H2, correct? I did receive a code violation for the chickens at the last term, you know, that, um, uh, this code falls under section five one four regarding single-family residents, so I can see a lot of violations that are more serious than the chickens, my chickens have been contained, they are, um, they have, they have a really good chicken coop, and maybe they stay in their zone, um, they, currently, currently, we are going through, agree? The only communication, um, routes that were connected from my mother-in-law, who's from Honduras, I was in Honduras, to my husband and my son, were through our chickens, and the communication and how she taught it, taught us, I, I homeschool, so as a homeschool instructor, not only could she help me instruct his values and healthy habits to our homeschoolers through our, um, through the web, through videos, instructing us, and healthy habits of providing, um, a stability for old school in our community. Um, at this moment, it's very hard for us to make, there is, I must be brave, because they're home, away from home, uh, they are also our therapy. My husband works at the both, wakes up every morning at three forty-five, so he's, he's up, um, providing for them, I know that the afternoon is providing for them, they've been there for both of us, uh, we have our later chickens, we have, um, our girls, and we also have Tantrum, Pepper, and Chiquita, that has been, and it's so silly, but Chiquita, I never thought a chicken would come up to you and greet you, because, yeah, I heard she told her, she thinks she's human, she talks to us, and I was not a believer of the chickens had a break until I went through it, and she showed, you know, this, so I would like you guys to consider, um, this, um, code, um, that's been in the county, um, for five years now, and that was one of the reasons why I chose the county, um, stay, and I would make consideration over this code, so I think you, Amy, has, has touched basis on everything I was planning to say as well. I did make a post online to see what my neighbors in the area of Oak Park Estates thought about the chickens and how much it bothered them, you know, what was the reasoning, ninety percent, or ninety-five percent of them were, were in agreement to have the chickens, especially with also the food supply that's going on, we are, we're having also scared to eat about eggs, uh, we're, we're also seeing numbers, this cholesterol has lowered from six hundred, um, and one of the things he had cut out were eggs, and since we've made all the effort and all the research, which, which, um, science project for the homeschoolers, my son has now graduated, has sent something to Mississippi State, the Indian Department, so it, it was wonderful, and I love him, everybody that graduated, glad to come, and, um, be a part of our, our chicken living, um, I, I appreciate all the time, you guys, and I really ask you to consider this code.
Okay.
I'm here about the chickens, too.
Give us your name and address.
Jennifer Bibbling Nelson, twenty-four, Oak Park, Delaware, Pine Crest Park. Um, I had chickens, they, I was in violation of the code in Pascagoula, that says you guys have to have a hundred feet in between, um, homes to have chickens. Um, there was one complaint, county enforcement did know about my chickens, saw my cameras, um, knew that I had them, said, when the point comes through, that's when, you know, something might be done. Um, just like the Steblies, I watched the video from Beasley first, um, I had one neighbor complain, never really has had, um, the second complaint came from the dog catcher, um, he came to my house on August twenty-second, and then came back February eleventh, December eleventh, and told me I needed to get rid of my chickens, because he's not quite sure, but he thinks it's been passed for thirty days, um, but I needed to get rid of my chickens. So, I did, well, I was waiting for court, because I knew it was coming, I've already been, um, given a ticket or whatnot, been told that I couldn't be arrested for it, my chickens are, just like the lady before me, I homeschool my daughter as well, I'm trying to be your responsibility, you might think it's ridiculous, but in the day, maybe our kids are inside playing video games, they go to swim, sit down for eight hours a day, our chickens give her something different, that one day, she might want to be a farmer, she might go stay, you know, in the...
Taking care of our chickens, just like our dogs that we have as well, um, and I think just the first lady that spoke about, about it regarding the dogs, animals, other animals, yes, they do get out, just like regular dogs, cats, feral cats that are walking around, the fact that this is such an issue should tell you that there's so many people out there that have them, and to know that, I feel that I was targeted when so many other people in Pine Crest Park have chickens, you can hear their roosters, um, in our subdivision, our width for our, um, lots are no more than eighty feet, so in any way, shape, or form, nobody can have chickens because of how wide our lots are. So, even with our own, the ordinance that is in place in Pascagoula, you know, just consider that all the people who do have chickens, who feel so passionately about this, it'd be the same thing for an animal that's not a chicken. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on in. Give us your name and address.
Charlie Clark, sixty-one oh five Ridge Road, Gulf Hills. Uh, I'm not going to say anything at length, I just wanted to clarify one point my wife made earlier. We do have chickens in our house, uh, we're on the golf course. The important thing I want to emphasize is, both of us, I certainly do respect private rights, citizens' rights, property rights of other people, and if I were someone who didn't like chickens, and they were walking all over my yard, I would probably object to that, too. I just wanted to emphasize that our chickens are in a protected area, that it's, they're not free-range, they don't wander all over the golf course and other people's property. We keep them in a chicken coop, which is surrounded by a fence, they do not escape, and they don't pose a hazard to other people's property. We don't have a rooster, that's a side issue, but we don't have a rooster, just five chickens, and we do try to respect other people's property rights, they are not free-range chickens. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. For public comments.
Mr. Berry, can I say something about the chickens right quick?
Yeah, go ahead, Brian.
Uh, just, I guess, for clarity's sake, um, the county does have an ordinance... Uh, just, I guess for clarity's sake, um, the county does have an ordinance that says that farm, you have to have an acre or more to have farm animals, and so we're not out there looking for chickens and looking to try to, uh, penalize people or make them get rid of their, their chickens, but we do have that ordinance on the books, um, and so that may be, you know, if someone's complaining about it, then we're, sometimes we have to go look into it, and it, it may lead to a code violation, that's kind of where we are with it, we are looking at revising our ordinances, I don't think it would be any stricter than it is now, especially on chickens, but that's something that we can look at and would bring before this board before we change any ordinance, obviously, and all that would be adopted by the board, so just kind of wanted to clear the air on that, we're not out looking to penalize people that have chickens in their backyard.
Yeah.
Um, but we do have an ordinance on the books that says you have to have an acre or more to have farm animals.
Very good. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Appreciate it. All right. That brings us down to consent agenda, could I get a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended? I'll move. By Mr. Taylor, the second by Mr. Morris, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, does that bring us down to consent agenda number two, I believe, oh, if you wish to definitely let the record be shown, or I've accused myself for number, consent agenda two.
Okay, can I? Consent agenda number two, can I get a motion for consent agenda number two? Mr. Taylor, the second, aye second. All in favor, aye.
Thank you, Mr. Morris, that brings us down to department heads, Mr. Comer.
Um, yes, sir, I, I just want to give a brief update on, uh, where we are for the housing of municipal prisoners at the, uh, at the ADC, um, as I think I've reported to you previously, the Attorney General came out with an opinion, um, actually two opinions in maybe March or April of this year, that kind of combined three different statutes, and it was her opinion that municipalities could not pay more, and I so, I assume by implication, um, counties could not charge more than $25 per day per prisoner for the first 30 days, and it goes up to $31 or $32 a day thereafter, the current MOUs that we have in a, in place that were approved maybe a year and a half ago or so, um, provide for the cities to pay the county $55 per day per prisoner, and that was a negotiated rate down from the initial 80 or so dollars, I think that was proposed by the county, and this board settled on $55 a day, so, um, the city of Pascagoula got in touch with me and, um, sent us a, a new revised MOU, uh, that I still have, that drops the rate down to what the Attorney General said the rate should be, um, I've been talking with, uh, with Josh and Brian about this issue, um, and the, the, the one change is that in getting some data from the, um, um, from the ADC, Pascagoula is, I say unilaterally, it is unilateral, uh, have, is paying what the AG says is the rate, in other words, we're billing them at 55 a day, they're only paying 25 a day, so we're sending them a bill, let's just say for $10,000, and they're paying us $5,000, um, the other three cities are paying the $55 rate, um, Pascagoula, I think, maybe for the last two months, has, has cut what they, they're paying the county, so we got to fix it, um, I did reach out to Will Allen with, uh, Butler Snow, who works for Massett, does a lot of work for counties and sheriffs across the state, um, and in a nutshell, he said that everybody's got a problem on their hands, uh, gonna try to get the legislation changed next legislative session, which I think it, it needs to be, um, but for right now, we've got this issue that we've got to address, there, there's only, if we stick with what the AG says, there's only one other option, and that is to modify the definition of a municipal prisoner, which we have the right to do so, per the AG, right now, the definition of a municipal prisoner is from arrest until being bound over to, to, to the grand jury, relatively a short period of time, um, we could extend it from arrest till indictment, uh, which could be a long period of time, depending on, on, uh, what's going on with that particular person, um, if we extend the definition of a municipal prisoner, as long as that prisoner is a municipal prisoner, the city would be required, uh, to transport, uh, the prisoner back and forth to court visits for a longer period of time, back and forth to doctor visits for a longer period of time, and would also be responsible for any outside healthcare cost, hospitalizations, things such as that, apparently a prisoner, uh, at some point recently, um, I say recently, I'm not sure exactly when, according to ADC, fell and broke a, a hip or a bone, broke a bone, hip, uh, and the county ended up paying $35,000 for that hospital bill, so those are the type things that, uh, that the city would be responsible for if we extended the definition of a municipal prisoner for a longer period of time, we got it, we got to fix it, um, I think one issue is, is, um, uh, do we put a cap on it, uh, a cap for how much that we charge the cities per year, um, that, that cap would not involve medical bills, hospital bills, would not affect transportation back and forth to court visits and to, and to doctor visits, um, or do we just extend the definition of a municipal prisoner, uh, and say we'll pay what the AG says, um, from arrest until indictment, and just let it, let it be, um, this hopefully is only going to be for, hopefully, for a short period of time, if the legislature will change.
I'd say we extend it until the legislature changes the rule or changes the law to meet a higher amount to offset, and so as soon as they do it, then it's over, and it goes back to the rate we originally wanted, or a rate around that number.
I, I've notified all the, the, the city attorneys for the four cities that, um, we, we, we got it, we understand what's going on, our board has to make a decision as to what they want to do, um, of course, they may not agree with it, but we don't have to house municipal prisoners either, we're under no legal, ethical, moral obligation, we do that because we have a jail, and we can accommodate cities and help the cities reduce their costs because they don't have to build jails, um, but y'all may know, recently Luestale sent a prisoner to the George County Jail, and George County Jail sent that prisoner right back to the city of Luestale, and said, these yawns, we don't have an agreement to house your prisoners, um, I don't, I don't know all, any more details other than that.
Yeah.
So what's our, uh, what's, what's it actually costing us to house a prisoner today?
It's between 80 and 90 dollars a day.
All right.
Uh, I, you know, and I agree with what Troy was saying, that we, we probably need to extend the definition.
Yep.
On that, so that we can capture the cost for longer, um, I'm not convinced that, um, if we change the definition, that we're going to generate any additional funds, it's probably still going to be less than what we're generating now at $55 a day, you'd have to have several prisoners from each city that stayed in there for an entire month to actually generate the, the money that it would be, where it would be a break even, so, you know, we could look at putting a cap on there if we wanted to, but it would mostly be for the benefit of the cities, just so that they could know what their outside exposure would be, but I'm not convinced if we change the definition that it's going to generate, uh, much more, if any more, maybe less than what we're generating now at $55.
I mean, I'm good with not putting a cap on there, leave it open-ended until we see where this, where the law goes, and if the law works out in the direction we want it to work, then we can go back to the old definition, or if it starts to be just exorbitant on the cities, then we can look at it and talk with them, but, I mean, at some point, everybody's got to share the cost of the jail.
Well, and that's when you ask the cost of 80, 90 dollars a day, I mean, everything is going up, I mean, just like everybody's groceries are going up, I mean, uh, I mean, the cost of labor is going up, the cost to replace everything is going up, the cost of commodities are going up, so, uh, that, I don't see any time in the future it being a cheaper to do any of those things.
Have y'all went over the ADC's budget yet in your budget meetings?
We have.
What's it looking like?
Looks like it's going up, just like everybody.
Well, I mean, but, but i- is this going to impact, um, what we're doing, I mean, I, in my opinion, we need to break even with the cities, I mean, you know.
We're not, we're not anywhere close to that, Randy.
That's what I figured, I mean, that's what I'm asking, we're not anywhere close to that, so, we need to break even with the cities, so that we're not taking money from the unincorporated area to house city prisoners.
What the cities are paying is probably less than 5% of what it costs us to run the jail.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we, we got to, we got to come up with a break even point, I know it's going to be tough, but we got to come up with a break even point so that our unincorporated citizens, which are more citizens in the unincorporated part of the county, uh, than in the four cities put together, so we've, we've got to come up with a break even point, yeah.
But you can't because of the current law.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying, we're going to have to, we're going to lobby to get some laws changed, and we're not the only county, you can read throughout the state, other big counties like us are having the same issues.
I mean, it's clear, that's a law they wrote.
Yeah.
When $25 is an adequate amount, and they've never adjusted it.
I, I guess, I guess what, what I ultimately need is some direction from the board, not a vote, but some direction where I can go to the four city attorneys and say, this is kind of my directions from the board, where we can come up with an agreement to present to you for, for approval, um.
Well, the other piece of it is, it talks about state inmates and Mississippi Department of Corrections, we'll see, those people are a state inmate from the day they walk in till the day they leave, ours is a little different because it depends on the definition of your contract, right, so our definition, they're only a municipality for five days, that's all they pay for, after that, the county picks up 100%, so, uh, but it sounds like what the board's saying right now, Jimmy, is there's, you know, don't do a cap, reduce the rate down to what, what the AG's saying it is right now, is.
Reduce that, change.
Is the definition of.
Change the definition.
Until they're indicted.
Right, until they're indicted, yeah.
I'm good with that.
Right, I mean, and if something gets out of hand in a year, you can always, you can always change the use, what I would like to do is keep it the same for all four cities, right, I don't want necessarily to have different agreements with different cities, but, but if I understand the direction, I'll, I'll come up with a, with a, a new MOU that drops the rate to $25 for first 30 days and 32, 50, or whatever it is, from then on, from, definition will be from arrest until indictment.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, I'll bring something back to you, as soon as I can negotiate something with the, talk to the municipal attorneys.
Sounds good, thank you, Mr. Comer, bring us down to finance. Oh, hold on, finance, just, well, let's, hold on just a minute, yeah, it's 10 o'clock, I didn't realize that, I wasn't watching the clock, we have an appeals hearing at 10 o'clock, Marcus, are we ready?
Yeah, last month's appeal hearing, uh, for use permit, USAP dash zero three dash 2025 dash zero 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 four zero for Jamie Steadly, um, as you remember in the meeting, we tabled that because, uh, Mr. Comer needed clarification, I think, from Supreme Court.
Yeah, let me, let me, if I can tell y'all where we are, at, at the last, uh, meeting, um, um, we allowed the board, Mr. Comer, you allowed everybody to speak for and against, uh, uh, the, the issue, and that was all put into the record along with all exhibits, I think you do have a, a copy, do you not, of the, uh, of the lease agreement, the original lease agreement that was presented, that's in the record.
Yes, sir.
Um, and I wanted some time to review this, uh, this case that came out of the Court of Appeals, uh, last, uh, November, last July, uh, so, let me, let me go through, and Marcus, after I go through the legal side of it, you can tell me how this applies to our current zoning regulations.
Okay.
Um, the, the case called, I'm going to call it, uh, Sinfield, that's not how you say it, but I don't know how to pronounce it, Stacy Sinfield versus the City of Ridgeland, it was a case that came from the Court of Appeals, decided July 2024, rehearing, uh, was requested, but that was denied in November of 2024, and I'm going to kind of, it's a nine-page opinion, but let me just read a few excerpts from it, um, so, the plaintiff in that case, or the appellant, owned a residence and, and she had 2.2 acres of land located up in Ridgeland, uh, she'd owned the property for some 20 years, um, and she kept two horses on the property for about four years, September 1, 2021, the city of Ridgeland's Code Enforcement Division issued a notice of code violation to her, and the notice said as follows, zoning requirements do not permit livestock on property with less than three acres, horses must be removed from the property and kept at another location, the ordinance at issue said that breed, breed, as, I'm quoting, breeding, raising, and feeding of grazing livestock, i.e. horses, cattle, sheep, goats, mules, et cetera, provided that each such animal herein defined as grazing, grazing livestock shall be kept on a tract or lot three acres of land or greater, subsequent to that, um, remember, she got a, a code violation September 2021, November, uh, 2021, she entered into a lease agreement with the owners of three separate tracts of land that were adjacent to hers, November 4, 2021, there was a hearing conducted by the zoning board, the zoning board, again, this was after she had entered into the, into the leases, the zoning board voted to uphold the decision of the Code Enforcement Division, November 9, 2021, just a week later, she appealed the board's decision to the mayor and the Board of Alderman, uh, the mayor and the Board of Alderman upheld the ruling by the zoning, uh, board, and, uh, they ordered her to remove the horses from her property, remember, she didn't have enough property, but she got these leases to give her more than what was required pursuant to the ordinance, so on January 2022, she appealed to the Madison County Circuit Court, same as appeals from this board, December 2022, the Circuit Court of, uh, of Madison County entered an order affirming the city, so, the, the Circuit Court basically found that the city and the planning board and the code enforcement, uh, director were, were all correct, and said that, uh, it was this decision that was made was not beyond the court's or the city's power to make, so they upheld the decision and ordered her to remove the horses from her property, she appealed to the Supreme Court, Supreme Court allowed the Court of Appeals to make, uh, the call on this one, the Court of Appeals said the ordinance is silent as to whether this three-acre tract must be owned in fee simple or may instead be leased, let me read it one more time, the ordinance is silent as to whether this three-acre tract must be owned in fee simple or may be leased, further, the ordinance does not mention any gate or fencing requirement and does not prohibit grazing leases, so the Court of Appeals concluded that this lady brought herself into compliance with the plain language of the ordinance in question when she obtained a possessory interest in three other adjoining tracts of land by virtue of grazing leases, so, basically the same situation that we have here, and in, in, in my opinion, this board supervisors, you five gentlemen, your hands are tied, and I don't think there's any decision for you to make, I think that by, uh, the, 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 uh, addition of the additional land via the lease, and we, and we do, I do have something to give to you, uh, according to this case, gives her one acre of land, we may not like it, we may not agree with it, you may want to change it as we go through the, the process of changing the ordinances, but we have an appeal from the planning board, uh, at the time, I think rightfully so, denying, uh, uh, the, the relief that was sought, so the narrow issue before this board is, what do we do with this appeal, uh, uh, that, that denied the right for her to keep the, the chickens on her property? that, that denied, uh, the right for her to keep the, the chickens on her property? Since that appeal, there's been a change in the circumstances in that she has obtained a lease of additional property to give her one acre of land, almost identical to this case that came out last year from, from the Court of Appeals. So, with that being said, Marcus, assuming that, which I've seen it, and, and she has a acre of land, how does that fit with our zoning, with our zoning ordinance?
It would be allowed by right.
Yeah. So, that, a- and I agree. I've met with Marcus, April and I met with Marcus. If it's allowed by right, there's nothing for this board to decide. My, my recommendation to the board, um, whether we like it or whether we don't, is to have a motion to declare the appeal moot. Um, and, 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 and it moots the whole thing because there's, there's nothing really to decide if it's, if it's allowed by right.
It's allowed by right.
And, and I think that if you did anything else other than that, uh, any of the three circuit judges would immediately reverse the decision based on this case.
Okay. Sounds good.
And again, if, if, the policy decision is what do you do, uh, going forward, amending the, 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 uh, the ordinance, and that's a policy decision to be made at the appropriate time. But on, on this one, I don't think there's anything else. We don't have to get into the Fair Housing Act. Don't have to get into any of that other material. Um, I do have, and there was, did all of the supervisors get the, uh, the email from the Thompsons?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I, Marcus, just for the record, that was sent, so that's before the board. Let's put that in the record as well as this, Marcus, this supplement to the lease agreement. I did request, uh, the Stedley's counsel to provide me with a, uh, a, a description of the, the land. She did provide that to me that shows the additional point-seven acres that was leased. If that can go, uh, into the record as well. So, i- i- it, from the board's standpoint, I think the only choice that you have is to declare, uh, the appeal moot based on the, uh, the information. And I will, if the board goes that route, I'll prepare an order accordingly, and we'll put the order into the minutes.
Do we just need a motion to declare it moot or another?
Well, I think a motion to declare the, the appeal moot based on, on, on the, my review of the law and the information that's in the record already.
Okay.
All right, so I'll ma- I'll make that motion.
Okay. I'll second it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all. Takes care of that. Thank y'all.
Comment, please.
Go ahead, Kent.
I think we need to, to challenge the twenty-five dollars. It's gotta be reviewed periodically, and it hasn't been. I would, I would not be surprised to see it, it, if it were relooked at today, it probably easily could be twenty or thirty percent higher, and that helps the situation. So, I think we need to do whatever, whatever action we must do to, to, to get it reviewed for inflation and just increase cost.
Yeah. Okay.
I also think we should probably stop charging the three cities the full amount and follow what we're, we're, we're finding is basically the law.
I, I think that's what.
We're gonna have to pay it back.
Yeah, that's what we're, what we're doing, and we're gonna.
Yeah.
Jimmy's gonna revise the MOUs and get those back to the cities and come up with a, a new agreement that agrees on the twenty-five dollars and changes the definition of what a municipal prisoner is and how long that, that, they are a municipal prisoner. In addition to that, we can't just raise the twenty-five dollars. I mean, i- it's not up to us. So, you know, during the legislative session, that, that could be one of our initiatives to try to get the law changed or revised so that you can charge what it costs or, or certainly more than twenty-five dollars.
Right, I, I, I would, I would suggest that we join with, with, uh, maybe get in touch with Will Allen and find out what group is going to, to push this. I think across the, the, the state, Mr. Taylor, probably, um.
Oh, MAS has some interest in it, I would think.
Right, th- there's probably a lot of counties that, uh, that, that cannot recover their cost at twenty-five dollars, uh, a day unless you just had an old prison, that small prison, didn't cost much to operate.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right, very good. Good comment. All right. Oh, that brings us back to finance. Come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here to present the order approving claims docket.
I'll raise the motion.
Second.
Had a second by Mr. Morris. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
And, uh, the resolution authorizing inter-fund loans for fiscal year end, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Had a motion by Mr. Morris, a second by Mr. Bo Sarge. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Okay, and then the resolution authorizing operating transfers for fiscal year end, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll move.
Have a motion by Mr. Taylor.
Sir.
Second by Mr. Bo Sarge. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank y'all. Thank you. Uh, inventory control. Come on, Tracy.
Yes, uh, I have a resolution authorizing the donation of a printer to the Little Point Crabs Museum.
I make that motion.
Okay. Have a motion by Mr. Morris, a second by Mr. Taylor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you, ma'am. Marcus, come on.
The item I have for you are planning commission recommendations for July.
Okay. I'll make that motion. Second by Mr. Bo Sarge. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Marcus, let me ask you a question right quick.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so, what's the, I've been asked multiple times here lately, uh, what's the update on Bass Pro Shop and Top Golf? Uh, what, what's their development update? You got any?
Brian may have more of an update than I would have on that.
I got an email last week, Randy, um, from the developer at Bass Pro and asking for some information. So, uh, I owe him a call, and, uh, I'll try to get you an update after I talk to him. But, but it sound, you know, if they're continuing to ask for this kinda information, makes me believe that they're still moving forward. I just don't know where they are in the process yet.
Yes. What about Top Golf?
Top Golf were working on their wetlands permits the last I, um, spoke with them, and.
Well, I, I heard they won their appeal, and, uh, so they're, they have no, they have non-jurisdictional wetlands out there. From what I was told, they won their appeal. So, um, so that should open it up for all of them. If, if, if they're non-jurisdictional, then the others should be non-jurisdictional too, I would think.
I'll reach out to the attorney for Top Golf who we've, we've been in contact with. Uh, but I have been talking to the engineers, the civil engineers on the Bass Pro Shop, and they are working on their civil.
We're, we're, we're still working on the road, right, for their.
It's drafted, but it's not, it's not executed.
Okay.
I'll follow up on that for you.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Marcus. Uh, Joe, come on up.
Good morning. We're needing some clarification. Our asphalt laying operations are coming due to renew or rebid, um, along with the milling contract for the milling. And to get a quick background, we awarded on the east side of the river asphalt laying operations to Warren Paving. On the west side, Huey Stockstill was awarded. My understanding is that Warren wants to rebid their contract instead of renewing. Huey wants to extend his for another year. And then on the, on the milling operations, Mallet Brothers wants to extend their contract on milling. Can, they do county-wide milling right now. Uh, I just need to see which way y'all wanna go with it.
Does the milling part need to be tied in with the bids, or is it?
Well, he's up. I mean, he can either extend, we can either extend the milling for another year, or we can rebid it now. I've had a lot of discussions with the as- both asphalt firms have requested that we rebid from me because they want the as- they want the milling product.
Oh, okay, okay.
Like I say, Arlen, I, I've talked to Arlen and with Mallet Brothers, and he really wants to extend. So, I mean, that's gonna be a decision y'all make. I think the price will come down if we rebid.
Yeah.
If we rebid.
Well, they're gonna work in the milling. This time, they're gonna be more aggressive on getting the milling price down because they need the milling to, to, to complete their asphalt process, so.
Well, in today's world, why are you so certain price will go down if you rebid it?
They can run about twenty percent of rap into their mix.
Yeah.
And that saves them a considerable amount of money in producing the product. So, it would help on that end, and like I say, they both approached me and said they, they can do it a lot cheaper if we rebid. That's what I'm being told now, you know.
Well, let's rebid then. I'm good with that.
The fuel costs have changed some too, so that could play into what your per-ton asphalt cost is. So, it might be a good time to rebid.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So, y'all want, I, I, what I need to know is, do y'all want to rebid the east side of the river and the west side of the river, or, or extend Huey's contract for another year?
If you're gonna rebid the milling, I mean, you're gonna have to rebuild, but re- redo the whole thing, wouldn't you?
West and east.
If they're gonna drop the prices.
Well, like I say, that's, that's y'all, y'all gonna have to let me know. And I think the, I don't think the asphalt price overall is gonna change that much, but it will be some impact. Uh, but the milling is the one that I'm really getting a lot of heat on, to rebid the milling.
That's what I'd do.
You wanna do them all? I mean, all the contracts? Just rebid them?
Because if we can save some money, then we need to save, because asphalt's not going far these days at that price.
No.
We're paving a whole lot less for more money than, than.
Long-term, it's gonna be a problem.
Long-term's not gonna work.
Jimmy, do we need a motion to rebid it, or just head nod?
Uh, wouldn't, wouldn't hurt to have a, doesn't hurt to have a motion.
Okay. Basically, I would need a motion to rebid the asphalt laying operations east and west of the river and then the milling contract with cleanup.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Got a motion by Mr. Bo Sarge, a second by Mr. Morris. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Hey, Joe, let me ask you a question. So, since Jeff's gone, uh, Beachview, so, uh, in the future, I was gonna tell Jeff, in the future, we, we, we need to know when that contractor's gonna make a change like that.
Yeah, I talked, I talked to them after you called me, and, uh, and we had that discussion.
Okay. All right, because, you know, if they're the ones that get that second phase, they, they, you know, so far, so good. They've been, they've been, you know, pretty consistent on, uh, it's just they dropped the ball on this one. And I don't think they realized how important it was.
Well, I didn't know till you called me, and then when I called them, I found out. But, uh, I don't think that's gonna be a problem in the future.
I sent you that email last week on some of those shoulders, at some of those intersections.
We fixed those. I think all of them have been fixed.
Yeah, we need to start paying a little more attention to those shoulders because they're getting rutted out.
Every more, every time it rains, they beat them out.
Them out pretty good.
But we, we got all the ones that you had sent me repaired.
Okay, all right. And then, uh, how are we looking so far? Uh, they still on target?
I think everything looks good on the contract. They're on target on their time. Uh, we're opening phase two, the twentieth of this month. So, I think everything looks good so far. No problems.
All right, just tell them a little bit better communications, and we'll be all right.
All right. Joe, let me ask one.
Did he?
Yes, sir.
Question for clarification on the rebid, gonna rebid east and west, uh, asphalt, including milling?
Well, milling's a separate contract. I mean, you've got, you've got, our asphalt bid is broke out in the east and west.
Okay.
Our milling contract is, I believe, county-wide.
So, you'll have three entities bidding on milling?
Yes.
Two bidding on, on, uh.
At least two. You may have somebody else jump up. I don't know.
Gotcha. Okay, I understand. Just wanna make sure I, I got draft in order.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Joe.
Yes, sir.
We appreciate it. Oh, let's see. Todd, you still out there? Hang on, Todd, hold on, maybe. Did I overlook Melissa?
Yeah, Melissa, she had a.
Oh, okay, come on up, Melissa. Hang on, Todd.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is just a, um, informational, um, thing here. Uh, we've got, um, Wegovy, which is one of the, the weight loss drugs. It's a, was it GLP?
GLP-1.
Yeah. And so, it's now available through the CANPATH program. Um, you guys have already voted on the plan, and, and we've decided if it's available that way, that's the way we're gonna push our members to use, you know, use the CANPATH. The only reason they wanted me to bring this to your attention is that we've got a good number of people that are gonna be on, gonna be affected by this, like over fifty. And, um, so I wanted y'all to have, we're gonna send out a flyer, um, Verus will. They'll contact the individual members either by phone or email and let them know. They'll have like thirty days, um, to make, to make that change, excuse me. And, but you may get some phone calls. And so, if you'll, you know, have this handy and, and refer back to what the plan calls for. Um, and then you can, if they still have questions, they're welcome to call us, and we can try to answer any questions for them, help them through the process.
Okay, okay.
Y'all have any questions on that at all?
Any questions?
I, I have one question, Melissa, just in, in case this affects anybody else. I got an EOB recently. My wife had, had hurt her foot, and she missed doing physical therapy. Uh, a number of physical therapy visits, so I got an EOB, and this may be for you guys. Got an EOB that, it almost showed like I'm getting a credit back. It was almost like, it was November, the November timeframe, I think. And it just showed a lot of, like, negatives, and it's almost like they were redone. Or was that just claims that were being processed that, that came at the end of the last providers' contract? And then we're, it's not that big a deal, but.
I'll be happy to look at it and see if I can help you figure it out.
Yeah.
Um, that is during the time we made the switch, I guess, but as far as meeting their deductibles and all, it, they should have, unless that's some kinda credit, um, back for the deductible. It's hard to know without looking at it.
It is what it is. It is, I mean, I, I put it in the file. I just didn't know if other people, maybe, if you knew what it was and other people would get.
No, I haven't seen that.
EOB.
I haven't seen that, but look, I'll, Jimmy, I'll look it up and see if, uh, it's back from November, you said?
November, yeah.
Twenty-four. I'll look it up and see if I can figure it out and let you know.
Okay, not a big deal.
So, so this Wegovy change here, you're showing, uh, do we got any kinda numbers of what type of savings this will be to the county?
Yes, did you come with you? So, I, yeah, so it's close to, um, depending on the, the members, but we think we've got about fifty-five members, and it will be, uh, one thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars a quarter per member that's on the, the medicine.
So, you're talking about a couple hundred thousand dollars in savings?
Yeah.
So, you know, you may get some calls about why do I gotta get my medicine through this? But just on just one drug, it's two hundred something thousand dollars. So, I mean, I think that, I know it may frustrate people having to change how they're currently getting it, but it's very justifiable on, on why the change is being made.
I mean, this was one of the reasons you guys decided to go this route was because, you know, of the savings that were possible. Also, the member won't be paying any kinda copay. Member gets the, instead of paying twenty-five or whatever they were paying, they get that part free, and, um, it's shipped straight to their house. They don't have to go anywhere to get it. So, I think, I think it's beneficial for the member, but a lot of them don't wanna go through the hassle of making the change.
I mean, regardless, they're used to going and picking it up at the drugstore on this date. It's shipped to their house. It's a change, and people go, wait, why are we doing this? We want, since it affected, you know, fifty-five employees, uh, we wanna make sure everybody, hey, it's two hundred thousand dollars for the reason why we're doing it.
Is that the medication from Canada?
Yes.
All right. So, is it gonna be affected by any tariffs? Is, is prescription drugs from Canada to U.S. are gonna have to pay the increased tariffs? Because if so, I see that cost coming.
Right. Uh, the answer is, we don't know. That has come up in our discussions with, uh, this particular vendor. But this is a duly licensed pharmacy in the U.S. and in Canada, so I'm no legal expert, but maybe they can get away with it that way, but I don't know yet. It's to be determined.
Okay.
Okay.
Because always remember, when the tariffs go up, somebody's gotta.
It'd have to go up way high to, to make it be more expensive to.
Give him a little time. It's probably gonna go up.
Yeah.
One more thing, if you do get the phone calls, ensure the member, this is the exact same medication they were getting at the pharmacy. Now, it's getting mailed to them, so a lot of times, there's that Canadian stigma. Exact same medication delivered to them. Okay?
Okay.
Thank y'all.
Mr. Fowler, do you have anything else?
No, I do wanna make one, one clarification. It is exact same medicine. Um, it will be a different application. It's, it's, instead of an individual pen per week, I believe it's one pen before, that has four doses in it, so there's, that's the difference too, just so y'all know.
Okay.
It doesn't really affect anything, but if you're asked.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Todd, we'll try it one more time. Come on.
I'll be brief. Found out more about chickens this morning. Lot of stuff I didn't know. This is gonna be our mid-year workshop, I'm running a little late on giving, this, this is that up for June thirtieth. This is just a quick.
This is just a quick down and dirty. I don't foresee any big changes coming. We're kind of, our culture is there, we got, we got solid reporting, okay? Really solid reporting, which is key, and that's, thanks to Mr. Fodder, and our folks, and making sure everybody and all the department heads, making sure their folks report their claims, okay? So you can kind of see, we, we've gotten in a, where we were running, 2023, we had 33 claims with 181,000 claim payment. Every one of those is closed, so there won't be any what we call development, okay? So that is the number, all right, for that year. That's total number for 2023. 2024, we had 35 claims, okay? 2024 had 35 claims for 225,000. When I was in front of you last year, because I just saw my typo down here, 2024 claims, all of them weren't closed, meaning final payment. So last year, we were at 194, if you look down in my notes, okay? We were at 194 last year, so we developed from 194 to 225, right? So there's extra medical bills or something they didn't see coming. But once you make the final payment, none of that happens, okay? This year, our claim number at six months is down from where we were averaging, but if you take 23 and 24, we were averaging about 34 claims, we're down to 20, okay? This year, our dollars obviously are down. Maybe out of the 20, I think two of them are closed. So this number, 136, is gonna be higher next year when I come to you. I can't quantify how much higher, okay? But 2023 had one big claim that was 125 of the 181, okay? 2024 had six claims out of the 35 that represents 171, that should say of the 225. Last year was 194, this year it's 225. This year, we got four claims that represent 116,000. Most of these are police claims, okay? But that's the nature, that's the nature of that beast. Like, it's like we always say, you put the good guys in close proximity with the bad guys, and things are gonna happen, okay? Renewal, I talked to the folks there at Mississippi Public Entity. I think we're gonna have another favorable renewal, okay? Loss prevention, we're still on the as-needed basis. So I've got two assigned loss prevention specialists for the county. One is Harland Lane, he lives right here in Pascagoula, and then I've got Donald McDowell, who lives in Gulfport, but he also runs over this way. So, so thanks to all the, the board, human resources, Mr. Fodder, all the department heads, y'all have built the sa, uh, culture of safety. So that's all I had for you today.
All right, very good. Todd, we appreciate it, thanks a lot. Mr. Fulton?
I had a couple of quick things on the state and federal items. On the state, the Attorney General's office has developed, or is in the process of developing a grant program associated with the opioid funds that came to the state. I believe they're putting up to about $70 million out there into the, this potential grant program, and the grant applications will be due on September 19th. We got some preliminary forms last week, they haven't finalized all the grant forms yet, but we've got a preliminary set of those, and we're gonna be working together. I'm gonna be working with Josh and Sonya and others to try to help put in a grant application, particularly with South Mississippi mental health and the programs that they have that revolve around drug addiction and Stevens Center. On the federal side, Ian Clark from EZL's office, one of his staffers will be in our office on Wednesday, starting at 9:00 a.m. We're gonna show him some of the GOMESA projects that we're working on, just to kind of give them a feel for how we're spending our GOMESA funds, and also talk some about FEMA reform and some of the environmental permitting that goes along with that. So they'll be here through lunch on Wednesday. And then the following week, Sebastian Paez with Wicker's office, and also Cross Thompson with EZL's office will be in our office next week, next Wednesday, for a similar presentation. And then in September, mid to late September, Senator Cindy Hyde Smith will be in Jackson County, and we're trying to get together with her and, and schedule some time, so.
Okay.
More to come on that.
Okay, very good.
I have a question on that opioid settlement, because the MAS president can serve or be a, or appoint a member on that, on the advisory board. If I am on that board, is there something that would say that I wouldn't be able to vote on our side here in regards to asking for funds? I'd like to find out, make sure that whatever I need to do to make, to conflict anything, we do what we need.
Yeah, I'm gonna need a little more detail, because I don't.
You'd be serving on that board. It's an advisory board for the, for the Attorney General. It would be the funds that may benefit our Stevens Center or our regional health center, which every county's got that type of.
I think, he's probably advisory, you're probably okay, but Jimmy, you probably just need to let Jimmy get the details, just speak up.
You're not benefiting personally.
No, no, no. He just wondered, he just wondered if he can be on that advi, or you, or.
And I think I, I think I could be on it, I just might have to limit what I do here.
Be on that advisory board that recommends, but then I think that'll probably go from there to the legislators to determine what happens, so.
My, my first, my gut feeling is you're probably okay, because most of the ethics opinions, if not all of them, deal with people personally benefiting in some, some form or fashion, but let me, let me look that up, and I'll tell you.
There's already been a subcommittee assigned too, but I'll send, I got a bunch of stuff by email, Jimmy, I can send to you and let you go ahead and start looking at it.
Okay.
Okay.
All righty.
Got it, Brian?
Yes, sir.
Good, all right. That brings us to supervisor items. First thing up is a resolution appointing Sheriff John Ledbetter to the Guff Regional Planning Commission. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Ross. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right, I didn't have any items. Mr. Morris?
Nope.
Mr. Taylor?
I have none.
Mr. Ross? Mr. Bo Sarge, you have a couple.
Yeah, I got a couple, yep. So first one is make a motion, a resolution accepting the resignation of Laura Mount as member of the Gulf Park Estate St. Andrews Fire District Board.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Bo Sarge, a second by Mr. Ross. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
I also make a resolution, appointment, or recommendation to appointing Michael J. Buah III to the Gulf Park Estate St. Andrews Fire District Board to take the other one's place.
By Mr. Bo Sarge, a second by Mr. Ross. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. All right, thank you, sir.
You know, I said I didn't have anything, but talking about lighting districts, have we gotten any, made any ground on?
We have, we met last week, Troy. We put together a map, and we're looking at boundaries for where that lighting district would be. We superimposed the, the existing lighting districts to know kind of where those boundaries are. We also superimposed the West Jackson County Utility District boundary on there to see if it made sense to try to mirror what their district looks like. But we're doing some, some more work on that, and we'll, we'll continue on it.
And we need to probably start now, looking for members to be on that board, because lighting districts have been hard to have members that show up to meetings. And that's gonna be a big enough district to where it matters. I mean, we can't just let the bill roll and hope that it's right. We gotta have good people on that board.
And, you know, the process that we had to do last time where we combined the districts, so we've still got to go through that process and get the petition and all that stuff, so. Like I said, we had our, I guess our second meeting on it last week, and we'll continue trying to work on it until we get it to where we need to be.
All right, thanks.
All right, that brings us down to closed session, to see if there's sufficient evidence to stay in executive session.
Mr. Cummins, we have four, four, five items. One is pending litigation, Raw versus Jackson County, that case is in federal court. Potential litigation with regard to Sadiel Laka. Discussion regarding location or expansion of a business in Pascagoula. Mr. Fulton has discussion regarding prospective business decision of Singa Health System, and Mr. O'Neal has a discussion regarding prospective purchase of land.
Okay. Mr. Ross made a motion, could I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bo Sarge. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.